Good job, I'll do. How you doing?
How you doing?
Making it.
Better than yesterday.
Doug, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Is that the new one? Thank you. Miss Sandra, six yet?
Six.
Miss Sandra coming?
I wonder where I am today. The lady.
Yeah, I heard about that. I thought she was coming. Now, we don't have prayer on there, but I'd like to pledge in prayer.
Oh, okay.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. Notice was given of this special meeting of the Sales Tax District One, Number One, Thursday, February first, two thousand eighteen, at six P. M. in the courtroom at City Hall. Call to order, we need a roll call to determine a quorum. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All members are present, and we do have a quorum. We would like to stand, and I'm gonna ask us to pause for a moment of silence, and then after that, I'm gonna ask Councilman Shaw to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Moore to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we just come to you tonight, we just wanna thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Lord, we just pray that you would help us to have a good meeting, Lord, as we take care of city business, and we'll just honor you with everything we do here tonight. Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're open for public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments about tonight's agenda? Does anyone have any comments? We're open for comments. We're trying to give everyone a chance to... Hello, Ms. Goldman.
Hello.
Great, great. It's good to have you.
You're so good to be here.
Great.
Welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
You should pay those prayers and thoughts.
Yes, yes.
Mayor, I just handed out some of the council was asking about what our revenue was and our expenses-
Yes, ma'am.
-of the street projects.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I did was, the first page here is the revenue. You can tell each month, it runs between seventy-seven and eighty. When we got our money yesterday, we had a hundred and two thousand. That's very unusual, but we're grateful.
Yes.
Apparently, our sales in December must have been wonderful for Bastrop.
Right.
'Cause that's only the street money. The second page is the actual money we have spent on the street program itself, overlaying streets. I run through December the seventh, I mean, June of seventeen, because we actually started spending money in last year's budget. The second page is what we spent through yesterday. Within the exception, at the bottom, I have one invoice that I hadn't paid, and I think, Mayor, the invoice that you've got today was about a three-hundred-and-nine-thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't include that. But when you look, you can see so far on our street program, we've actually spent one-point-two, a little over one-point-two million. The second, the last page of it, is the breakdown, where we borrowed the money. Whenever we had our last, our street election to renew the tax, we're getting this money as people pay taxes, and we are putting it in account, saving, and we pay twice a year. This here is from regions. This is the breakdown of what we spending, and what the interest is, and what we'll totally be paying, and when we'll be paying. This is stretched out until December of twenty-four. The sales tax that we've got here ends December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. That would be the ten years.
Ms. Goldman, is the two times a year that we pay back to cover this-
Yes, ma'am.
Is it the same amount?
No, it's different here. If you look on the last page, you can tell that at the beginning here, we only paid just interest, but then the following December, I mean, June, we paid interest and principal. And they're staggered like that.
Okay.
So the five million dollars was initially for the streets?
Yes.
And that's only for the streets?
Yes. First, we called for the election. Once it passed, then the council decided, we know we got ten years of sales tax, we can fund it. So they made a decision based upon our experience in two thousand five. Two thousand five was the first time that we got this fund. When we had the election, our plan was to go pay-as-you-go. Let's build up, let's spend that, build up more, spend that more. But then, the price of gas went way high, and it made the asphalt just unreal. So they decided, what we better do, 'cause it's not gonna go down, we better borrow the money. And we did, and we was able to overlay several streets. But once we did that, we had to wait till that ten years was up to pay back for the other. Based upon that experience, the previous legislative remembered that. So they said, "Let's get the tax pass, and if it is, we'll have money." They went before the bond commission and told them, "We wanna borrow the money, because we wanna do an overlay." So it was decided by the council and the bond approved it, that we could borrow five million, because we had the money dedicated for it to pay that loan. So that's what happened. We borrowed five million. And they really kinda wanted to do in phase, so they said, "Well, let's just do three million, and we'll see how far that goes, and then we have more later, we'll come back and finish it up." And that was the plan. And that's kinda what we did, but once the new council, they kinda wanted some more streets and stuff, and we added on it. We knew we was gonna do the streets, but a lot of the streets that they wanted to do had sewer in the middle of the streets, so that meant you had to check the sewer. It was a long process, and even though y'all awarded the bid and we started it, there has been some problems that they have found, that they wasn't there when they first came in. And next week, the mayor will ask y'all to consider a change order on that. Long story short, even though we've got a bid, and even though we've had problems on those streets, to make the decision to either fix it or just overlay and let the chips fall where they may. We really won't know exactly until y'all have done all of the sewer work on those streets and overlaid all the streets. And once it's through, and y'all are satisfied, then we say, "We closed this particular street program." And then after that, y'all can decide what y'all wanna do, if it's funny.
Wouldn't it be in our best interest that we go ahead and figure out how much overrun we gonna have? And I guess we got a change order coming through, the mayor's gonna-
We do.
...do next week. But I just want us to be careful about taking on indebtedness when we running into these issues, like over on a couple of streets where the sewer was really bad. And I think we need to really think about this, because I hate to see us going into debt more. Let's finish this phase one, and then come back, and if we got surplus, absolutely.
That's your recommendation?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I wanna say, go ahead, TD.
So the five million dollars that they initially borrowed, was it only for streets? Was it, was it-
It was for the streets.
Was the restriction, like, they couldn't purchase any equipment?
No, we borrowed to do this, because we wanted to work first. Now, every month, you can see, we get around seventy-five thousand. But our note that we put into account as reserve to pay that loan is fifty-two thousand dollars a month. So we have a little cushion there. That cushion, if you look at your rest of the item in your Fund Twenty-Five of the budget, that's up in different categories. Where we did budget equipment, and we did budget materials and supplies. Take, for instance, this, this month, I just paid a bill today that they ordered some sand. I'm sure the sand was because of the ice, you know, the salt. All those kinda things there comes out of that also, too.
What about street equipment, Ms. Goldman?
We have purchased some street equipment.
Yes.
The street equipment that was budgeted was for the street sweeper. We got that. Also-
And that was, that was over three hundred thousand dollars, correct?
It was two hundred.
No, it was one, about one ninety-two, one ninety-two, I think, if we're gonna-
So the street sweeper is approximately the same cost, the street sweeper is approximately the same cost of the apparatus that we're trying to get.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to do a comparison of the cost-benefit analysis here, without jumping the gun, saying we shouldn't do or should do. So I have a presentation, Mr. Floyd, can you cue up the video, please? I made a trip to Shreveport, I've been, history, three years ago, the city of Shreveport, my good friend Mayor Ali Tyler invited me to Shreveport, and they were getting a, they were looking at a, a machine to fix streets. Right now, we have what you call a program of throw-and-go. You get a pothole before you do that. Before, can you pause it? Can you pause it? Okay, thank you, sir. Right now, our street program is, go get some asphalt, three or four tons, throw it in the potholes, pack it down, and in three months, four months, the water gets under it, and we gotta do it again. I talked with counsel, Mr. Jones, about our liability. If, if we have a, and correct me, Mr. Jones, when you need to.
All right.
If we have a pothole, and we have plenty of them, and someone runs their car in it, and boom, they come, and they come to us and say, "Hey, my car's damaged." Well, gee, we didn't know. Where's the pothole? We've got a certain number of hours to fix that, otherwise, the next car that comes, and the undercarriage of our Mercedes-Benz is more than five thousand dollars. So risk management, potholes is a tremendous liability. Not only should we fix streets right, but we owe it to the citizens of Bastrop, because they have cars and front-end alignments. And the only people might be mad at us if we do this is the front-end alignment people, okay? That's the only people that we're gonna make mad. Let me finish. So I went to Shreveport, two, over two years ago, when they were testing this, this apparatus, and they did a patch. And Shreveport said, "We're not gonna buy this thing, we don't know whether it works." So they picked a spot by the, by the fairgrounds that was high traffic, because you got the football games, Independence Stadium fairgrounds, and all that, right by Huron Avenue, and then there. And Mayor Tyler monitored, she had her street program monitor, and I went back to Shreveport because I, now, this is the same truck that you gentlemen authorized me to try to get a lease for to cover forty-five percent of it. So we're still gonna have to pay-
Grant.
Oh, grant, yeah, grant, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting me. Oh, grant. I applied for the USDA grant, and I believe you talked to Mr. Jones yesterday, you said? We applied for several things, police cars, a snorkel truck, fire truck, a backhoe that Mr. Gray requested to do small ditches, because we want Bastrop to be a high-quality city to live in. And the fire truck would help us on our fire rating, the backhoe would help us clean some small ditches, and the, the police cars, of course, we need, as we add new police-
Mayor, can I say one thing-
Yes, you can.
About that?
Yes.
We sent three items, combined three items down there, I think, and-
Four with this.
It was a snorkel, maybe it's four with the backhoe.
Right.
And the, the only one that there is issue with was the street work.
Right.
And the reason for that is, we have a revenue stream-
Right.
-that we can apply to that. And they won't let you have a grant, see?
Right.
And I just wanted, wanted to make sure, and I, and he confirmed that.
Yes, sir, that's, that's-
Now, they will make a loan, but they wouldn't-
Yeah, they'll make a loan, and their other, you know, USDA is competitive, even though sometimes they're slow. And that's the trouble with being slow, is what we can't be. So I, I went to Shreveport to, I talked with Mayor Tyler, she said, "Okay, I'll set up for the street crew to fix some special potholes just for people of Bastrop, so they can see how wonderful this thing is." So I met with Public Works, I spent the entire day over there, Thursday before last, and I wrote with them from every, and I posted on Facebook, from, from using this system versus using their other system. Their other system is better than ours, they got a truck, three tons of asphalt, it's got an auger in it, lase and all of that. This is the best system in the world for fixing potholes that we have available to us. So this is a visit with the street superintendent, the guy, the top guy over streets in Shreveport, and I just want you to hear what he's saying. So I'm in his office.
We're here with-
Ernie Negrete.
Mr. Negrete. Thank you so much for receiving us. Well, I'll count that as a pleasure. Now, I'm here, and thank you all for receiving me so well, and cheering for our-
Training.
...to, uh, everything else.
There you go. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm here to look at the-
Infrictory.
Infrictory.
Right, right.
Can you tell me a little bit of how it's going for?
Yeah, it's going great. We had it, we had it, had a test run by the manufacturer and by the salesperson about two and a half years ago. They made a patch for us right in the roadway where we had a busy, it's a busy roadway. It's for the fair and for the football games, so we had a lot of traffic going over this one.
Okay.
They made the patch over two years ago.
What was it, what was it like before the patch?
It was pretty good size hole. And we filled it several times in our regular patching way, with our patching truck, our power patcher, which didn't really work too good.
Okay.
We've had that in there over two years now, and the patch has not failed. It hasn't frayed or anything, it's bound to the edges, that was heated up, so that it's not coming apart at all. We are extremely, extremely pleased with, with the, the way that operates and what it does for us. It's great, I mean, it's, we couldn't have done any better case.
So, so you're saying that you now can have a comprehensive street program, more comprehensive than without it?
We're, we're saving money by not going back and patching that hole two or three times a year.
Okay.
Going there one time, it takes a little longer to patch it, 'cause you gotta heat it asphalt, but once you're done with it, you walk away, forget about it.
Okay.
It's like, it's like a hot mix, hot mix, just bake them.
And then you're, you're recycling that, that asphalt.
Yes.
And you add a little, you add a little, but you're recycling and rejuvenating.
We are saving, where we were using maybe five to eight tons of hot mix a day, say. We are now only picking up less than about a half, a half a ton of hot mix, and that, that lasts a day, because we're rejuvenating the oil. And adding just a little bit of the new, combining it, that's it.
Great.
I mean, we're saving quite a bit of money, even on the purchase of hot mix.
Great.
So I think, I think, to me, it's very, very beneficial. We, like I said, I, I think it was a smart move on our part to do it, I think it was a smart move on our mayor and the council to go ahead and approve and allocate the money for it.
Well, I wanna thank Mayor Tyler for allowing us to piggyback on your bid.
Sure, no, no problem at all. I just come right ahead, 'cause I'm hoping that maybe in, in, within this year or next year, we'll buy another, another truck. So we'll have a couple of trucks, or the east, or the north and south.
Great, great. Well, thank you so much for entertaining us.
You're quite welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me talk about that for a second, please. This is a serious decision that, that we're making tonight. The manufacturer is out of New Hampshire. We have the same manufacturer, same fellow Tim that came up here to Bastrop when we initially did this, same salesman. Mayor Tyler, they authorized us, Bastrop, we're the only city that's authorized to piggyback off of their bid, we don't have to go through all that bid process. These trucks are not on a showroom floor, they custom build them, it takes time.
How long, do you know how long it takes for them to manufacture one?
Three months, probably. Yeah, three, four months. But, here's the problem, Mayor Tyler is so excited, she invited many of us mayors over to Shreveport. I didn't go, because I already was familiar with the program, I didn't go with the group, but now we have several other mayors who wanna buy these things, okay? The plant can only put out so many, if we don't do it now, we're gonna be in the line, and we might get one in two thousand twenty, might get one in two thousand nineteen. The plant is not a huge plant, they're a custom plant. These are custom items, they're built. They have everything, everything self-contained, roller, water, a, an area to hold, a harper that holds the, the, up to three tons of asphalt heated. This is a state-of-the-art apparatus. If we don't do it, we can't have a comprehensive street program. Now, what, what, what I don't wanna see, if since we spent right at four million dollars, I believe, three-point-eight million, phase one, something like that?
That's, it's gonna be more than that now.
Yeah, because we have overruns on South Cock Street, we had, when we cambered it, there's, the sewer was bad, so bad, we had the pipe burst it, we're spending another eight, we're gonna have overruns, overruns, overruns. The price of spending, I had Denman Engineering do the price of asphalting Henry Street, which is a major order from one-sixty-five back to Martin Luther King, four thousand feet, almost five hundred thousand dollars, to wipe us out. So the choice is, do we pave another almost mile of streets? This five million dollars won't pave twelve percent of the streets, ten percent of the streets in Bastrop. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna fix some streets really nice, and we're gonna throw and go, throw, keep throwing, and packing, packing asphalt, and, and, and it's gonna come up, it's gonna come loose, it's not gonna be quality, it's gonna be rough. This apparatus gives you a smooth, because it heats an area, and then they scarf inside that area, so outside the area you repair, and you got hot asphalt. This is the only process like this in the world. It's proven. We have hot, so now, if you saw cut, if you're taking saw cut and, and dig out, then you're talking about hot here, but then the problem is bonding the hot with the cold on the other side that you saw. Here, you heat an area larger, and then you scarf inside, and you're recycling asphalt. We're not buying tons and tons and tons of asphalt, we are, they spray rejuvenating oils on it, it, the oxidation, it reverses this oxidation process, it bonds, and they're using one-eighth of the asphalt, or less. Their asphalt bill went down, they are making street programs, I wish you could see, as we were out with the truck, people just stopped, "Hey, I got a bump over here, I got a bump, I got a pothole over here, please come." The evidence is clear. Now, hold it, if we don't do this, if this council backs up for some reason, we, it's proven, these things are all over the Northeast United States, you can, you can do repairs year-round, when it's cold, future cost is going up, because we piggybacked on their bid, the, we're getting a two thousand eighteen truck, I believe, and they contacted me and said, "If you weren't on this bid, you would pay another several thousand dollars," because of the two two thousand eighteen models, because the mayor of Shreveport was nice enough to extend us the invitation to piggyback on their bid. So the, the, the stage is set, gentlemen, the ducks are aligned, so we can have a comprehensive street program. Without it, we're gonna stay in the dark ages of streets. Now, what you guys might wanna do is pave another half-mile road, and leave the other ninety-two percent of roads unrepaired. That's not an option. It shouldn't be an option, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense for us not to do this. These, these are quality repairs, and, so, and if we do a phase two, we're gonna have more cost overruns, like we're having right now, and we're gonna be able to pave maybe a half, half mile. With the money that we have left, we can service, we can service and have a street program for years to come, for years to come, making quality repairs, and not just chunking some, some cold mix or hot mix into a hole and packing it down, and that's not gonna last. You're gonna run the cars over it, that's, we're gonna have to repair that again, and the liability is astronomical. Seventy-two hours, gentlemen, from the time we know that a pothole exists, we have seventy-two, it's that close to being right?
That is correct. There's actual, there's actual notice and there's constructive notice. So, I mean, if it's a big hole, and the city's supposed to see it and know about it, then you can have constructive knowledge of it. But once you get the notice, the city's put on notice, and another event occurs, that's when the city becomes liable for any, and it, it's not just car-related problems, like your, your struts, or your shocks, or any of that. I mean, it can, it can extend to, if it caused like a death or so, somebody hits the pothole, veers off and hits somebody else, you could also be liable for that.
Mayor, you're reading into it like I'm against this. I'm not against this equipment, this is first-class equipment. What I am asking is a little bit of slow it down, just a little bit, and let's see if we can go another two or three months, get this first phase, to see what we gonna have for us out.
Okay.
And then I'm ready to roll with it.
Okay, well, if we do that, if we delay, delay is error. Delay is error, because we get behind other cities, these things are, are taking off like hotcakes down in this part of the country. The plant has held this slot for us, because I told them, they said, "Well, you're, you're in line, you're in line." We were supposed to get a truck that they were taking from New Hampshire to the Chicago trade, they got a big trade show in Chicago, national asphalt stuff, you know, paving streets, and then drive it down here, okay? And, and it's about being in line. Shreveport's, Mayor Tyler's gonna get two more of these things, she just hadn't told the street department, she wants two more now. Two more now. And if we get behind them, we're gonna delay for at least twelve months getting. If we get behind several, because this is not like buying a car, this is a very specialized piece of apparatus, it's got everything, it's self-contained, two men run this. I wish I'd done the other videos, oh, I'm sorry, come on, I didn't see you up there.
See if I can offer some assistance, Josh Leonard with Bull Shep.
Thank you, Josh, I, I didn't see you.
Just briefly, there's two ways to do this. One would be a lease to own, which would be a pay-as-you-go, the other would be, we would have to go to the bond commission, which is gonna take two months. So if we kick this off today, it's either gonna not be a huge upfront cost, or it will take at least two months, and you can shut it down later.
So, Ms. Andrew? I-
So, Ms. Andrew, I, I have a question. So over the last three years, what's the percentage of increase in revenue have the city received?
It has been the same. Usually our street fund has been around 70,000 each month.
One more thing, can we apply in the near future for USDA for another grant for this particular?
You can apply anytime for grants, but because this is a steady revenue and right now we've got money that we're waiting to spend because we're waiting on the street. When you apply, they see all that and they, and to them, they're saying, well, y'all got the money.
You got the money to do it.
And afford to buy it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, he was very specific.
Yeah.
I'm not, he's not going to fund it.
No, they're not going to fund this.
The other equipment has to come out. Our fire and police stuff can't come out of the street fund. So that's the reason why they were so quick to say, oh, you're going to get your private property, you'll get your place. But with this street fund that's dedicated to the upkeep of streets, they know that an asphalt machine fits into that street fund. And we do have money. It's earmarked for things through either your budget or the fact that you went to bond commission and said, we're going to do a street program.
And Mayor, ain't none of us against, I'm behind you 100% on this, but my only concern is the budget. I'm already aware that we already, two streets, we already over. We got, we got four districts left. So my thing is this, if Prater's district's spending an extra $200,000, I spend $200,000, the million gone.
Wait, 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 let's, let's, I think it's Councilman, but it's my understanding and everything that I've seen is that right now we look like we're right shy of $4 million with the overruns. Uh, I think it's about $80,000 that I counted. Ms. Goldman, was I short?
Mayor, I didn't even take time to weigh it.
Okay, yeah, I looked at the, at the pipe bursting that I had to authorize because when we looked at the camera work, uh, we could have paved South Cox, but then we'd have cave-ins and things like, we want this to last 15 or 20 years, hopefully. So it's better to, I thought it was better that we fix it right. So that's about $80,000 and overruns is what I seem to remember, uh, between 40 and 80. And if we choose to fix one more street with the $800,000 or million dollars that we have left, Mr. Moore, if we choose to do one more street that's of any length, it was 4,100 feet from the townhouse up to Martin Luther King, we're going to spend like 460, 80,000 dollars, all the money. We wouldn't have any money left. We'd have no money left and all we could do is low-tech, throw and go. Take, go to drear, get some hot mix, throw it in a hole, pack it down. It's rough. It's not a quality fix. And we're using 12 times the asphalt, 12 times the cost and not getting a repair. Gentlemen, I don't want to say it's a no-brainer, but if we spend, we're not spending the $200,000 now, it's under $97,000. This is more valuable than a street sweeper. The street sweeper pales in comparison to what this thing will do for us. It'll revolutionize our street program. We'll have a comprehensive street program. Now, I, I just don't, if we delay, believe me, delay is error. We have the money. The cost.
We don't have the money.
We got.
We don't have the money, Mr. Scott.
Do we have any money to pave any more streets?
We got to see, but the streets we have already scheduled to get repaid. We don't know if we're going to run into any more problems.
Wait, listen, we're not going to run into.
You can't say that.
Hold on, yes, yes, we have Denman Engineering, wait, wait, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. You can pave a whole street if you want to. You just heat it and go down and heat and go down and repair and you can do it at one-eighth the cost of overlaying.
So what's wrong with delaying it till we see how much money do we have left over after the repayment?
Wait, 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 phase one, hold it, we have, wait, we have bids, gentlemen. We have bids.
I'm pretty sure you would come across another one.
We have bids.
I'm pretty sure. We just don't have the money.
Jesus have mercy. We do have the money, Mr., Mr., we're spending 3.8 of $5 million. 3.8 of $5 million. We're not going to have a million dollars worth of overruns. We're not going to have a million dollars, that's.
You can guarantee that.
I can guarantee that, man.
You cannot guarantee that.
Okay, fathom me, how can we have a million dollars in overruns of the streets that we have on the program? How can we possibly have a million dollars? The, the South Cox is unusual with its, with its sewer. Now, either we fix South Cox, right? Now, let me state something. First of all, to pave the streets that were chosen, I don't want to say it was insane, but to page, to pave streets in little neighborhoods where there's 12 cars and we leave major arteries out of the program wasn't wise. I could name streets that I'm not going to.
But very little of that went on too.
But it went on when Denman said, these are the worst streets and we chose other streets to pave. Streets that, that the masses. Yeah, they said, these are all the streets, but then they said, these are the priorities. So they were not all in priority 1, 2, 3, 4. There were alterations and things added. So, gentlemen, gentlemen, we have, we had bids for 3.8 million dollars of the $5 million. Is it five or a little over, Ms. Goldman?
We borrowed 5 million.
We borrowed 5 million. And you see the schedule, we see the schedule of payments. We have the revenue to do this. $200,000, $197,000 is not going to break the bank and we're not paying it all down. For you gentlemen to sit here and not see this is, is beyond me. We don't have a choice.
Mr. Josh, I want to ask you. How long does it take to get the funds to order this piece of equipment?
Um, we start first with, uh, making sure everybody's clear, we're not, the city of Bastrop isn't doing this. It's sales tax district number one. So we're only talking about that half-cent sales tax. That's all we'd be obligating. So that, off the top, right there. It would take probably at least 90 days to get it funded. But what we're talking about today is just kicking that process off. And that's what I was trying to say earlier. You're saying you need two more months. You could stop.
I'm hearing from the mayor now, it's more than kick it off, he wants to commit, commit the equipment.
I mean, now this.
Let me state this, Josh, let me state this. The problem that we have is I don't want to get behind 12 other cities. And we're talking about there's something that costs the same thing that a street sweeper costs. We're talking about, there's no liability. You guys sit here and authorize a $200,000 street sweeper and that just, you know, sweeps the streets, okay? We're talking.
No, that was before this administration.
No, no, sir, no, sir. We didn't have anything to do, that was your decision. That was your decision to spend $200,000 on a street sweeper. I'm for a street sweeper. Street, street sweeper's a nice thing to have. But it pales in comparison to what we're talking about here. We're talking about something that'll fix these crappy streets. Have you been to St. Joseph's, uh, church and seen Cruz Street that cuts between there? Have you been, that's not in the street program. We have street after street after street with pothole after pothole after pothole. We have liability up to Kozanka and we won't take the action, 200,000, less than 200. This is peanuts compared to what we're going to get. We're going to save a half million dollars over, over 10 years. We're going to save $50,000 a year over 10 years.
Mayor, this is not the only place, we've got budget problems, not just in that.
Do you know of anything, is, is street, are street potholes important?
Absolutely.
Okay, how important are they, Mr. Shaw? Are they important enough for us to invest and fix them right?
It's fine to do that, but we got, we got a process to go through. You just.
Wait.
Are you sure about what you're saying about they only can make two of these a year?
Yes, sir, I can get the salesman on the phone and that's the trouble, he's been trying to keep us in the queue. If we delay, they're going to kick us out of the queue, we're going to have to get to the back of the line. I don't know how many orders they have, they're in New Hampshire. They're a quality maker of the best street equipment in the country. This is the best infrared asphalt repair system in the country. They're in demand.
You sure, you sure that?
No, I didn't say they're the only one, I said they're the best.
Here's the, here's the deal too, you have to go through a process when you order equipment. We can't just throw out there without writing an official that says, hey, this is why we went with this equipment. That's all I'm saying.
Wait, 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 let me, I didn't understand you, Mr. Shaw. What do you mean, all you're saying?
What I'm saying is, you are required to get three bids unless you buy it through the state.
No, no, hold it, we'll piggyback in on the Shreveport bid, we don't have to, that's taken care of. Yes, they've already, it's already done. It's done, yeah. We piggybacked on their bid. It's already clear. I said that when I printed it to you, that we are, we talked about it in the film. Thank you for letting us piggyback on your bid. We don't have to go through the bid process, that's clear.
Okay.
Okay. They got the truck and they ordered some more at their price, at their, they've got, they've got a bid for three. Ollie Tyler was, they're going to let me get one of them, gentlemen, the Shreveport. We're going to get one of those slots.
Let me ask you, Mayor, what, this says 250,000, why do we?
No, I didn't, I didn't tell, that's up two, you authorized up two. We're trying to get 190, 190-something. I had all the, oh, Ms. Goldman, you may not have seen that yet, I had all of the papers sent from Shreveport to us. You may not have gotten, seen the email. But all of the bids, all the paperwork that Shreveport used to go through this, we got everything, the bids, everything is done. Everything is done now. We can sit here and talk about the same amount of money we did for a street sweeper, which goes down and sweeps the curbing and less than 5% of our streets have curbing. Less than 5% of, so we're talking about spending $200,000 for a machine that will sweep trash up on the side of 5% of our streets. $200,000. And we can't see the wisdom. Wait, wait, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. We can't see the wisdom in leasing a machine over eight years with the low payments that will allow us to fix streets from now until the next bond issue comes around. We can take the money that we have left and stretch it far and wide. That's what this enables us to do. Otherwise, we're just like any other little podunk town that's throwing asphalt in a hole that's going to give away in, in two months, three months, five months. Once water seeps in and it freezes, the, the expansion's going to burst the, the mix, the fix. And, and all we're doing is temporary, all we can do, all we have the ability to do, our street department, is, is temporarily patch something. We're temporary, temporary, every hole that we fix is temporary. And we know it when we, when we throw and go, when we chump the asphalt in, beat it down, we know that that's a temporary fix and it's silly and insane to continue down this road. I can't call it anything else.
Saying there's nothing wrong with that equipment, Mayor, and you, you, you seem to be leaning toward that. Here's the.
No, I'm not leaning, I know there's nothing wrong with it, but my problem is this, uh, Mr. Shaw, is that we can't be afraid to be proactive. We can't.
But we have to meet our budget too.
We are in the budget. We're in the budget. What this is, you know how much street we can pave for the cost of this truck? Do you have any idea how many feet we can pave with the cost of this truck?
Sound like we can continue and start paving all of it.
No, no, I'm saying, this is what I'm saying. Suppose we take the $197,000 and we say, let's pave some more. With now street program, phase two. How much street do you think we can pave, Mr. Green? How much street can we pave with the cost of this truck? How long?
Which means how long?
Yeah, a mile, two miles, five miles, how mu, how much do you think that?
I mean, by looking at, when I've seen the video, I mean, you can, you can pave a whole street.
No, 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 no. If we don't get it, let's, let's talk about. No, we can't pave for half a mile. Half mile is a half, it's less than a half a mile.
$200,000?
That machine is not for paving whole streets.
That's right.
No, no, you don't get me what I'm saying. You see, in, in statistics, there's what's called a type one error and there's a type two error.
If I could interject, I just, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to clarify what I said earlier. We're talking about doing this two different ways, okay? The first one would be to enter into a purchase agreement, then we would come back and issue bonds and that would take about 90 days. And that would be funded not, it would be outside of the existing budget. You know, we have the $5 million out there already paid for by that half-cent sales tax. Every month when that money gets put in, there's a little bit left over that isn't going to pay for that bond. That money would be what was used for this. Now, if we don't do it that way, we would do what's called a lease-to-own. And that would just be incrementally monthly, that same source of funds paying to the manufacturer to lease the vehicle until we've paid it off.
And that's, and that's what I'm proposing, that we don't go the bond way. That we, that we go to, to, to lease this equipment. Uh, it's, it's gonna, you know, the life of these things is at least 20 years. This is a brand-new Kenworth truck, brand-new Kenworth with a Cummins diesel. And it's going to last 20 years. We can take the money, we can take this money and $200,000 would allow Bastrop to transform our street department. Mr. Gray, would you come up and be ready to talk after Mr. Josh? We can't be timid. Josh, um, for equipment like this, would you say eight years is out of the question for leasing?
It's not out of the question. And the other aspect of that lease to do it the way we're talking about is it has to have a non-appropriation clause, which means next year when y'all budget, if y'all say y'all don't want to pay for it, they come pick up the truck and take it back.
Yeah, we, say that again, say that again, say that again.
To do a lease and not go through the bond commission, it has to have two features. It has to have a non-appropriation clause and it has to have an anti-substitution, or it can't have an anti-substitution clause. And the non-appropriation clause basically says if the council next year decides they do not want to appropriate funds to pay for that lease, you cannot be punished for that. The lease is done, they come pick up the truck, it's over. If you want to do a lease without that clause, you have to go through the bond commission. Because that's dead.
Gentlemen, this is so frustrating. This is so frustrating, this is so frustrating. Uh, here's an item that you voted to seek 45%, approximately $80,000, we're going to pay the other 100 and, 100 and whatever, 85,000. And we're going to pay 100 and something. So we're talking, the difference in what you voted on before is 80-some thousand dollars. And you're saying that that's too much of a risk now. I don't know what changed, but you voted for this same truck. USDA wasn't going to do 100%, we made it clear it was 45%. And you voted for it. And now for eight, a mere $80,000, you want to force Mr. Gray to keep chunking asphalt and packing it down and six months later, he, they are, we are so busy going around and around. Mr. Gray, you want to say something?
Yeah, that, um, I wouldn't say six months later. We was potheading before the freeze came in and after the freeze left, we was potheading the same holes again. Now, gentlemen, the only thing I can say, you must not be driving your district because the streets are bad. They're real bad. I, uh, have pictures of, uh, pothole, I think it's your district, Mr. Green, I got a call.
I probably already know it.
Got a call by the tree at Bill. And while I'm looking for the tree across the road, I'm driving in the middle of the road and fell in a pothole.
Okay, is it, is it just that pothole or is the whole street just damaged? Cause now that's what you.
It was a pothole.
Okay, that's just a pothole.
It was a pothole, it was a pothole. But the streets are bad, uh, with this machine, me and Mr. Scott don't agree on a lot of things, but I agree with him on this. With this machine, we can pave roads for the next 10 years. I have pictures of, of rap we have taken up off the roads already. Either we go have to pave the roads, rejuvenate this rap, or start selling it. We, uh, just did things with, with all the extra stuff that we had done, we even paved the dog pound out here. Uh, we did the dirt yard where we wouldn't be getting stuck out there, wasting time pulling the trucks out. So I, uh, just ride your district and look at your roads. Look at your streets. That's all you got to do.
We were paving the streets right now, Mr. Gray, right?
But you got more than just those streets we repaired.
I understand it.
You got a lot of bad streets, man.
So you're saying, in your honest opinion, would it be wrong to like delay it till we see the, the price of the repayment of all the streets? See what kind of problems we're going to run into in the near future? Is this?
Let, let me say this, we're going to have a problem with the streets that we are paving already. Cause we got drains.
That ain't helped the decision.
We're going to have a problem.
So we need the machine to even fix those problems.
Mr. Gray, I got a question. What about the dump trucks? Are they in pretty good shape or we could use some more dump trucks?
Ma, you can use a whole lot of things over there if you want to use some.
But I'm just saying that the dump trucks in bad shape, or that'd be something-
You don't have any at all.
For sure.
Well, my understanding that-
Mr. Gray, can you tell what, what we decided to do with the dump truck and the motor?
Well, right now, we didn't have to do that. We found out there was a wiring problem instead of the dump truck.
Okay.
The dump truck should be back up in another day or two.
And, and Mr. Gray, have we gone to Monroe to look at surplus dump trucks and things?
Where, uh, they had promised that if we need a dump truck or two, they would, they would let us have it.
Yes, and we're working on that, Mr. Moore. It's, that's being taken care of, sir.
As far as the equipment, we, we need a lot of things over there.
And we need that for sure.
Yeah, we definitely need it.
We need a lot of things, you know.
Make sure that we did have that, cause that's something we gonna need for sure.
Well, we need a lot of things. We need lawnmowers, we need tractors. You know, uh, we got stuff that should be junked, but we steady patching and trying to make it work. So as far as the equipment, that, we need a lot of things over there.
Mr. Gray, in your, in your opinion, you're a police juror for two terms, I believe. Eight years, you have a lot of experience with potholes. I talked to a police juror today that said, please let us use that machine. We've seen it in operation.
I think they got one, they, they gonna put it on the agenda and try to get them one.
Yeah. Um, uh, I promised, I promised that we would work with them. Uh, and, cause they got more problems than we have. They have heavy equipment on their roads. They got tractors and things. No, no, we, we need our own, Mr., we have hundreds of miles of streets in the city of Bastrop. We can afford to pave, we can afford to pave ten miles of streets or so.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's the actual savings by piggybacking on Shreveport's, Shreveport's bid? I mean, is, is the MSRP that much low or higher than what Shreveport did?
Well, the future is uncertain. The MSRP will be, definitely be higher. Probably three thousand, five thousand, somewhere in there.
Surely they're giving a cut for getting four of them, right?
But the thing is, the bid is set. But the thing is, delay, we get behind other cities if this council comes around. If this council comes around at some point in the future and say, oh yeah, it's a good idea, then we're behind all of the other orders. Because in Louisiana alone, Shreveport's gonna get one to two trucks. They're ready to order right now. So I don't want to even get behind Shreveport and we're pigging back off of their bid. Because we need potholes fixed now. In OW, this is less than two hundred thousand dollars, amped to rise over, this is less than the cost of a Bentley or Ferrari. This is peanuts when it comes to repairing, being able to repair every street in the city of Bastrop. Every street needs repair, virtually. Every street needs repair.
So how much we saving right now by, by, by piggybacking? Cause you said it on the question.
No, we're saving a, a few thousand dollars, but the thing, Mr. Green, is we'll be delaying and the potholes will get worse. Now, are you telling the people in your district you're willing to let the potholes get worse? That's what you're saying to your district?
No, that's what you-
No, that's what you're saying right now. I'm willing to wait and let the pothole problem get worse because it's not gonna get, it's not gonna fix itself. So you're telling, each of you are telling your districts, I don't know about you, Mr. Prater, but each of you are telling your districts, hey folks, we got the best system available to us for two hundred thousand dollars. This is what you're telling the people of Bastrop. You- No, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore. Well, in my opinion, in, wait, hold it, in my opinion, Mr. Mr. Look, in my opinion, we as a body, I'm gonna put myself in it, we as a body is telling the public, we know our streets are horrible. We know we have potholes everywhere. But we can delay fixing your potholes, people. And you've got to just bear with us until we can make another eighty thousand dollar, eighty-five thousand dollar commitment that we were willing to make beyond what we were willing to make a few months ago. That's what we as a body are telling people. We're saying, hey, two hundred thousand dollars is too much to fix your roads correctly. That's what we're saying. We're saying, we, we scared to spend two hundred thousand dollars when we got another million dollars in this fund and the fund generates more money than it takes to service the bonds. This is the service schedule. We're making, we're bringing in more than it takes. And over time, we're gonna make money with this machine. And we're telling the public, we are too timid. We're scared to take a risk because we don't have a reason, but we just scared, we scared that if we spend another two hundred thousand, we gonna run out of money. That's insane. We have a million dollars, we're not gonna have a million dollars, we're not gonna have, that's twenty percent of our total street budget for ten years. We are not gonna run out of money if we buy this truck. And whatever we can do, or whatever, the, the, uh, quarter of a mile that we failed to pave and, and, and do the rap and stuff and do whatever, you know, what we're doing is grinding up the asphalt. That little short section, half of Henry Street, half of paving Henry Street, not even half, forty percent from the townhouse to Mont Luther King, forty-one hundred feet. Denman said it would cost at a minimum four hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars. So we're talking about a little over a third of that. So from the townhouse, paving from the townhouse to Miss, uh, uh, Fielder's house, that's the money we're spending to say, to pave one little section. That's what we're gonna be able to do if we don't get it. pave one little section. But if we do get it, we're gonna be able to fix every street in town. We're gonna be able to have a pothole less town. Pothole less. We won't have potholes. And that's what, that's what we are telling the people of Bastrop. We don't want to fix your potholes, folks. We're gonna delay. And you keep driving and spending money on front end alignments and tires and having us exposed as our attorney has told us that someone could get really hurt seriously. And then we've got a suit that, believe me, the suits are gonna cost more than what we pay the extra eighty thousand dollars that you, you've already committed a hundred and ten, a fifteen. You already committed that when you authorized me to apply for the grant for forty-five thousand, I mean for forty-five percent. You've already committed to that. And now you're scared of the other eighty thousand dollars. That's what I hear. What's the reason?
Would not fund any of it.
That's right, because they said-
Know that.
No, they, look, I had talked with them, they said submit it. They told me to submit it. But then they ran short of money. Yes, USDA told me to submit the bond. I met with them in, in, in Lake Charles. I, you can, I wish Mr. Jones was here. We talked about this. There's no guarantee, Robert, when you apply for grants, that we get anything. But they had-
We got the revenue stream coming in.
And we have.
They are not gonna approve a grant.
That's right. That's right, because when they looked at our financials, they said, you've got money to pay for this, so why should the government give you money to pay for something that you're able to pay for? That's the whole idea. We are able to pay for it. That's why they didn't give it to us. If we were broke and didn't have the financials, then they would have said, oh gee, you really need this. But because you don't have the money. So that's why we're back to having to do it ourselves because we have the revenue to do it.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What if we wait ninety days? Listen up to him now, before you go, go out.
We're gonna lose our position in line, but go ahead.
You're saying, is no way in God's heaven or, or earth that we gonna be able to reclaim that back and get back in line?
Oh, you know, Mr. Shaw, we can get in line, but the line will be longer. Right now, we're getting the next truck that comes off the line, basically. We're, we're right there at the top two or three that's coming off the line right now.
We asked him that, point blank.
I can call the plant guy right now. He's standing by. No, I can call him right now. Tim will verify that he's holding a slot. They held it through December until we got, the, the USDA, let me give you the history of this. We applied for the grant, what, in August, Ms. Goldman? July. When I first came here, we applied for this grant. The USDA said, we're not gonna give you a grant until two things happen. We get charred, is that true, Ms. Goldman? And until you fix that end of that courthouse that we've been trying to get fixed for sixteen years. And we've been letting Bastrop have grant after grant after grant and you're out of compliance with the American Disability Act. So that end of construction that you see, because the slope was too steep from the door down to the parking lot and some poor person could have rolled back into trying to get up into City Hall and they had us redesign and that cost us forty plus thousand dollars to do that concrete there. Because this city government did not fix it sixteen years ago. Or, or twelve years, or, or, or ten years, or eight years, or four years, or three years, or two years, or one year. So they told me, Henry, we ain't letting you have a thing until you fix what should have been fixed for sixteen years. So that delayed it, hold it, Mr. Green, that delayed us getting an answer. That delayed us. We were sitting waiting until the concrete dried, until they get the rails up before we could get an answer. So finally, they gave us an answer. If it wasn't for the rails and deals, we could, and had gotten our financials down there, we would have gotten this answer months ago. So here's the plant sitting up there saying, and the, and the, and our poor salesperson, Tim, the plant representative, saying, we believe you all, you all went this far. Surely you're gonna go further. We're gonna reserve your space, spot. This is your truck. This is your truck in the line.
So, Ms. Sanders, how much we have left in, uh, street budget?
I, I have that report. Uh, but we can't just relook at that budget because we have bought other things that we didn't know we was gonna buy that was not budgeted. But when you get your report next month, you'll see the line item. Uh, I can't, I didn't have enough hours today to think about that.
Ms. Scott, what's, what's left in the street budget?
We have about, and mine, these are rough, based upon phase one. The street, but the street program was designed to do two phases.
How much we have left?
Phase one, well, it's five million dollars we borrowed.
Okay.
This phase one was three point eight million. Okay?
Okay.
And I believe that the overruns, Mr. Green, will be about, probably about, so far about eighty to a hundred and twenty maybe.
Leaving us with what?
Leaving us with about a million dollars.
So why not buy it outright if we gonna get it?
We can, we'd have to go to the bond commission, or we can take the less risky and lease it. Okay, do a lease and, and not have to go, is that correct, Josh?
Ja- Yeah, and it, it would be a lease to own.
So what's the interest on the lease?
Uh, your cabinet at six percent, but-
So we gonna pay, we gonna, we gonna pay, we gonna pay more than what's the machine running?
Well, no, not necessarily. I mean, it's, that, that's not something I know off the top of my head. I don't have that in front of me.
Regardless, we have interest on it, it's gonna pay more than the item worth. So we can just buy it outright? Unless you have a zero percent in, in interest rate?
Yeah, we could. Mr. Green, that is an option, but we'd have to go before the bond commission. Is that true?
Yes.
If we bought it outright?
Really, it's not a question. I don't have the documents from that deal in front of me to tell you whether it's available or not. You know, that's a- Yeah.
Cause we could buy it outright, man. We gonna buy it instead of just leasing. We don't have answers to these critical things here as far as ordering it tonight.
What, what's the critical? Yo, no, I want you to, yeah, I do want you to authorize us to have the, the, to, to go out on the marketplace. We have a financial advisor, Namdi, we talked to, talked to them. We've been talking to Mr. Bowles. He's been guiding us through this process. Uh, Bill Bowles, you with the law firm, correct?
And, and to be clear, i- if you have not already earmarked the money that you borrowed, I don't believe, and I don't have the documents in front of me, I'm pretty sure this would fit within the uses of what the bonds were issued to pay for. So yeah, you probably could use those funds to buy it outright. I can't say that for certain, is all I was saying. I don't have the documents to look at right now.
Yeah, that, that is an option. We would have to go, uh, to the bond committee. You would have to authorize us, Mr. Green, to go to the bond commission and get permission to spend this tax dollars.
That we have budget for the streets.
This is a street program. When you say streets, you're not talking about a thin strip of asphalt. You're talking about everything that takes to give people a smooth ride. Okay? Including street sweeper. Is that correct, Ms. Gold? Isn't that streets?
Because we-
We did buy the street ass-
Yes, yes, ma'am. So we-
This is a five million dollar, um, loan as well?
No, we did.
Just pay for it outright.
We borrowed out the budget.
Out the budget.
We did not spend the five million. The five million is an overlaid street program. But we did buy a street sweeper.
Out, out of streets. This is for streets. Now, now we, we can give people, and I know you guys, I guess I'm an entrepreneur and I take calculated risk. To me, the risk is not there. This is a sure a home run. This is a big fat pitch right down the middle of the plate. Mr. Green, you play softball. You've hit a few of those out of the park. This is a big fat pitch down the middle of the plate that, that we can start within, in April, we can have delivery if we act now. In April, we can have delivery and we can be fixing streets. Nothing's permanent, but we can fix streets that those patches, we can do it for one eighth the cost because we're rejuvenating the existing asphalt. We are heating. The apparatus heats the street and that old oxidized, uh, asphalt, we rake it and add a little bit. And get the roller off the truck. Everything's on the truck. It's self-contained.
It's a nice, it's a nice item.
And, Mr. Moore, when we were at LMA, you told me that you loved that.
I did, and I still do. But I just want to make sure we got it in the budget.
That was in June.
That's all.
We-
Budget is everything. That's it.
Yes.
Cause if we have in the budget, we can buy it outright, right, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, we got it in the budget. But we, but we don't know for sure.
So would you, if the budget would stand it?
If we knew that we got money left in the budget.
Well, the reason we did phase, they did phase one, I wasn't part of it. We wasn't here. Mr. Green and myself and Mr. Prater was not here when this plane took off about streets. But we here at the landing. You know, we're at the airport when the, when the plane's coming in. And we have tons of potholes in this city. Tons and tons, lots of potholes. No, but, and it's not gonna, you're right. It didn't, no, 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 no.
It's gonna be potholes along with Bastrop and, and-
That's right. That's why, Mr. Moore, we need a, a system that will fix the potholes. You just said, there are gonna be more and more. And we need a system that is gonna make quality repairs. And we're talking about a difference of what you already approved of like eighty-five thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about. About eighty-six thousand dollars of what you alre- these five, you five gentlemen approved me going to get forty-five percent of the money and we're gonna have to pay fifty-five percent. So we're talking about authorizing another forty-five percent to have a permanent fix to our street problem. But it's not gonna break us. And there's nothing we can spend that extra eighty thousand dollars on that will give us the cost benefit, the cost, the cost benefit. Nothing we could spend the eighty-five thou, the extra eighty thousand dollars that would, that would start to solve the pothole problem, Mr. Moore. Nothing. We couldn't find anything on the planet that we could dedicate this eighty thousand dollars to anything else other than this that will help our streets. We can't find it. And I challenge any councilman to tell me how we can spend that extra eighty-five, eighty-seven thousand dollars to do what this can do for us. I challenge you. Tell me what we can spend the eighty thousand dollars in question for. What can we dedicate that to? Another-
Let me ask you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What about, uh, other areas? Is there other areas we can cut to reap some of this knowledge?
Well, streets, when you, that's a good question, Mr. But we're limiting this to streets. Let's limit this discussion to streets. I don't know of any areas that we can cut. We have less people, we didn't replace some people because we're getting the machinery to, to, to do this truck. Just imagine what a street, a Bastrop street department, uh, uh, repair looks like. How many men do we have out there patching potholes? Three or four, Mr. Gray?
We have three or four, sometimes the whole crew have to go out there.
Yeah, and they're out there patching with shovels. Now, who runs this truck? Mr. Mr. Floyd saw it. Uh, everybody on Facebook saw it. I don't know how many of you on Facebook.
I don't get Facebook.
Okay, well, I posted it. Two men runs this truck. Two men runs this truck. Two men takes, and in thirty minutes, they've got a repair that's gonna last, they don't know how long. Because the test that they did by the, uh, Shreveport Spa, Baseball Stadium and, and the Independent Stadium in the highest traffic area, the big, they picked the biggest pothole they could find. And they did that repair. And they waited two years before they ordered this. They waited two years because it held as smooth as you could run your hand over it from, and you couldn't tell where the bump, where the, where the edge of the repair was. You couldn't tell where it was except for color. Because the oxidized, the grayish was outside and the, the part that they repaired was still black. So there's nothing that we can do with eighty thousand dollars, eighty-seven thousand that's in question because you already authorized, or you already willing to authorize a hundred and ten or fifteen of it, fifty-five?
We didn't authorize that now. That was a grant that we weren't able to get.
No, forty-five percent was granted, Robert.
You can't count that chicken, he's not, that's not-
No, I'm saying, but if you authorized me to go and seek a grant for forty-five percent of it, and that's clear, that's clear, forty-five percent, we were gonna have to pay fifty-five percent.
Amen.
Okay, wait, hold it. And fifty-five percent of two hundred thousand dollars, I'm rounding up, is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Which means that you were willing to pay, based on your vote, a hundred and ten thousand dollars of it. That's what you voted for. We, it was clear that the USDA grant was forty-five percent. So what we're talking about is the forty-five percent, which is less than ninety thousand dollars, that you are balking at, that you're backing up and saying, gee, this is gonna break the bank. Or we're scared of this.
It evaporated, mayor, when they turned it down. It's gone.
Hey, mayor, I just got a suggestion. I can't speak for everybody, but I see everybody got a lot of questions here. Let's table this for next month or next week's meeting.
Next week's meeting's fine.
Everybody time to think about it, you know?
That's fine. I agree, we can table it to next week's meeting.
You already have the budget, right?
On account of that, I just wanna be clear. This particular fund does not pay no salaries, no benefit. We cannot pay people out of this fund. It's strictly materials and equipment to do the street. I just wanna clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman.
Because the money that you pay those people in the street department comes out of the general fund.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll have the budget.
Ms. Ms. Goldman, what I was alluding to is Mr. Gray's got five people out there with shovels and, and, and shoveling and throwing asphalt that's gonna come up. We could free up three of those people to go and do something else. You're talking about how can we save in other areas? We have our mulcher that's in today. We've got our fecon head on our mulcher with the bulletproof screen. We're gonna be mulching streets.
When will that be available?
Tomorrow, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. We, it was delivered today, is that correct, Mr. Gray?
We got your day, but we're not gonna use it tomorrow.
No, no. We got some training to do. We have some training to do, Mr. Shaw. Sir?
We got six ready, right?
The mayor in his wisdom has brought, is gonna bring somebody up to train everybody again.
Yeah, yes.
Gonna run through a little-
They had minimal trainable, yeah. Yeah, cause we're gonna bring in, uh, the same guy who mulched this, uh, this right next to us, the Bastrop Mill Site. Uh, he is the best, uh, equipment operator that we could find. And for a lot of reasons, we want, for safety reasons, we want our people to know what they're doing. So I didn't wanna just turn us a loose, even though we've had some training down in Alexandria. Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Mayor, let, just, it may ease the council mind. We don't plan to hire anybody extra to do this.
Right.
We already got the peoples already employed. This would give them something to do up. In fact, I don't plan to hire anybody this spring, but if we hire anybody, it'll be part-time workers, seasonal workers. And, uh-
And we're trying to do that under contracts with workforce development?
Workforce.
Okay.
So we, we, we're trying to cut everywhere we can. But this would make it a lot easier, cause like I said, we pothole right before the freeze. And some of the same streets that we pothole, we had to go back and do last week.
One month. One month we had it last.
So.
But gentlemen, we're fighting a losing battle unless we get the equipment. We, what we're trying to do, what this administration's trying to do is get equipment that fewer people can do the work of many.[1672.10]